And we'll write the pledge of allegiance to the flag behind the law.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see here, I think we begin with public comments, or at least a summary of them if we had too many to read individually. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lori Vine for that update.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have many and many individual ones, so I will categorize these the best I can. And as always, the full transcripts will be posted. So we had three emails saying that the district should stay in hybrid until a vaccine is widely available. Four people encouraging the district to take an adaptive pause. Three people encouraging the district not to take an adaptive pause. One person saying that the science does not support wearing masks. Wearing masks is endangering our kids' health. Also, a suggestion to use UV light instead of the school disinfectant. One person asking that no matter what format we're in, that we continue to allow students to go home for lunch if they choose, because that process is working well. One person asking us to please add more details on the COVID positive notification letters. For example, adding when a person first became contagious. One person noted that some people who are pressing for full in-person are also traveling and attending indoor gatherings. One person commented that Dr. Vine should not have the sole authority to move Thomas Middle School to remote learning. One person commented that the metrics process has become confusing, and they are surprised we did not take an adaptive pause. One person asked that we consider separating remote learners from in-person learners. One person commented that parents who support hybrid learning do not all support full in-person learning. One person emailed to not separate remote learners from in-person learners by creating new classrooms. One person commented, please provide information on the availability of vaccines, and if students will be required to receive the vaccine when it's available. Twenty-one people commented to please move to five full days of in-person learning. Two people commented to keep students in school. One person commented they would like guidance on the Illinois State Board of Education guidelines for meeting the minimum public health guidance, because ISBE says, quote, "greatest extent possible," unquote, for six feet, but a school message said, quote, "where feasible," unquote. Which is it? Number one asked why Dr. Vine does not want schools open. Number one encouraged us to use current metrics, not outdated metrics from August. Six people commented that we should move ahead to step four, as their school has 75% people choosing in-person learning. Excuse me. One person commented, we should move to remote learning based on Health Department guidelines, not ones created by the board. Two people asked that we notify parents when there is a positive COVID-19 case in their child-specific classroom. Excuse me. One person said to please finalize your metrics tonight and return to following the best governance practices related to board duties and superintendent duties. One person said, I don't agree that we should have to have five out of six metrics in the concerning area, because any one of those could cause a health concern on its own. One comment said, board members are not protecting our schools. They must recuse themselves from decisions related to safety and leave the decision to Dr. Vine, who has proven to make safety decisions before. One person said, stop surveying us and just return to school. Go four days and use classroom-specific metrics. One person said to allow the superintendent to make safety decisions based on her knowledge, just like she does for inclement weather. Two people commented that students with special needs need to continue to be in school. One comment said, follow all public health guidance. Don't just selectively follow some of it. And the last comment said to eliminate the metrics used to start step four and look only at classroom data. That's all of the comments we received by noon today.
All right. Thank you, Lori, and to all that submitted their comments. As we always do, we read them and take them into consideration for all all board business and all board meetings and all board decisions. So thank you all for your input. All right, so I assume we should just go into the transitional model reopening presentation portion here and talk about any necessary motions maybe afterward.
Yeah.
So I will turn it back over to Dr. Lori Vine.
Yeah, I think those motions will depend on what the board decides tonight. I'm going to share my screen, as tonight the board's main topic is to finalize the metrics for if the district should return, need to return to remote learning at some time. So let me see if I can get this going. Okay, can someone give me a thumbs up if they see this screen? Thank you, everybody. Okay, so tonight is about the transitional model of reopening the entry and exit metrics that the board has been working on. As a reminder, this has been the transitional model of reopening we have been following since we first shared it in late July. And we're talking, we, well, we'll move forward and say that in terms of entry and exit criteria for step four, that has already been determined for that step four in-person or remote option. The board determined those on November 12th. We have published those widely. Once we enter step four, we discussed that hybrid would no longer exist. So it's a, you choose step four in-person, or you choose step four remote. And the only possible movement that we would plan for at this time would be between step four and full remote. And so what the boards working on tonight are finalizing those exit criteria for leaving step four and having to return the district to full remote. Now, I always want to remind everybody, it's important that we remember everything is fluid as the pandemic changes, or as guidance from our Health Department or our state departments change. We may need to always revisit things, but this is what we're focusing on tonight. Just a quick review. The board originally looked at three versions of this, what some people are calling a scorecard. And the last we met, the board had agreed to version C, except for asking me, and I hope I captured your request correctly, except for asking me to bring the board back together to look at these four areas. So the first thing, I'll go back here, see if I can see this on my screen. Originally, option C had, you'll see on the right side, seven Xs, had seven critical components that we were looking at. Those are also listed on the left. But the first thing that the board was trying to determine is if we should add an eighth area. And that's add the section about mitigation strategies. So I'm sorry, I'm going to go back and forth here to show you a little bit. I know you have these in your board docs as well. Right above the external metrics, or the last internal metric option, is about mitigation strategies. Again, those five strategies determined by the Health Department is about having masks, doing increased hand washing, doing temperature checks, or self-certification, increasing the disinfecting that's happening in our schools, and doing social distancing to the greatest extent possible. And so the first decision that I think the board will need to make, or one of the decisions will be, do you want to add the mitigation strategies as an eighth critical component? Maybe I'll review all of these, and then we could go back and look at each one. I'm open to whatever works for everybody. The second one was to review the region 10 positivity rate. There was discussion at the last meeting of, do we continue to leave that as region 10? Or does the board prefer to do that as region 10 north only? So that's the first item below the external metrics. And you'll see that this version C does have the updated metrics, data points that the board agreed upon. But on this one, it says region 10 north positivity rate. And so I just needed clarification. I really wasn't sure where we left that. If we left it at, we did want to look at north, or continue with just the entire region. The third area that I think the board wanted to revisit was reviewing the total staff absences item. Excluding, and that area talks about excluding remote staff that don't need coverage. There are approximately 10 staff, who if they were absent, they would not need coverage, because they're working with remote-only students. So my question for the board is, do we want to change, adjust the metrics for taking those 10 people out of that category, or leave the metrics as they are? And again, to show you that, that's it kind of in the middle here. Total staff absences excluding remote staff is something that we would look for over, if we had nine days in the significant concern area over two-week rolling period, we would consider that ongoing insufficient staff and significant. Currently, you'll see in the significant concern, it's greater than 115 absences. In moderate, it's 60 to 115, et cetera. So if we're pulling out the remote staff who don't need, don't need coverage, do we also adjust these by those same 10 people? And make the significant current concern greater than 105? Make the moderate 50 to 105? So that's one of the areas that I think the board was still determining. And then the last one would be, how many categories of significant concern does the board want to determine would be needed to move the district to remote? So again, is it, is it, if we, if we end up with eight, is it seven out of eight? Is it five out of eight? You know, that was, I think, one remaining piece for the board to discuss. I guess I'll ask before we move forward, was there another area that we were still trying to figure out that I missed?
Yeah, Lori, or Mr. President, sorry.
I'm on mute. Go ahead, Rich.
So Lori, I think one of the main things was, our discussions were that these would be down at the school level. So one of the things that we asked for last time was a breakout of what this would look like at the school level, because that's really where we were looking to implement these, rather than a district-wide, school-type process. So how is that incorporated into this mix here, or is it not?
Yeah, it's not. I apologize. That was not my understanding. I thought the board was really looking at the situation of when the whole district would go remote, and not a specific school or specific classroom.
Yeah, Rich, from my recollection, the ask was to look at it and monitor it at a school level. But that, that school-level detail was not part of, you know, what the board wanted to vote on. For school level closures, can't talk. You know, look at, look at the example of Thomas, right? We're going to have direct input from Department of Health involvement if we should need to address a specific school outside of this rubric, right? So this rubric would be a
With that, with that in mind?
A model that Lori would use to close the entire district. And my notes are that the, the, the school-level detail was just supplemental to, to ask was, can we track it? But, but that was not part of what we were voting on, and not part of what we're viewing to that level of detail. Anybody else? Chad, did you have something?
I was just going to say, I thought that, I thought it was going to be posted, though, at a school level of detail, from the perspective of, so that schools could monitor it individually, right? Because I think one of the points of this was understanding, like, like what happened with Thomas, right? We know that there was cases, so now we understand this is, this is where that's at, whereas opposed to, I guess that was the thought process, was that, yes, it's, it's a whole district-wise, we return to mode. But I think it was, the intention was to show it what each school looks like. Does that make sense?
And we can do that in terms of student or staff cases. You know, we can't, the PPE is really district-wide. The external ones, of course, are district-wide. You know, we could, you know, staff rate and staff absences, what we're seeing at this point is they're really even across the district per school. But we could definitely demonstrate, it's a little hard by school, because a lot of staff work at various places. But we could probably create a dashboard that shows what the staff absences are per school.
I thought that's what we talked, talked about last time. Because even, I think, you know, Brian Kay said that, that, that information was available, and we can post it. If, if again, you know, Brian, like you're saying, if it's, if we're making the decision at the district level, then we should be even monitoring at the school level, right? Because why would we close one school, or why would we close the district if one school's having challenges?
No, we wouldn't.
That's, that's my question, too. Isn't even just the first evidence of school transmission its own? I mean, this Cook County Department of Public Health is going to, is going to move in right away and close the school.
Right.
So
Right.
I mean, district-wide, I mean, these, these metrics are, what we're looking at, that, that's kind of the really big picture here. If, if there's ever a problem, I think the Cook County Department is going to come in and, and swoop in and, and take care of it for us, right?
I think that's very likely, Scott.
Okay, so what, what essentially are we looking at here, then, with these metrics?
Well, again, I'm, what I want to back up, what I brought the board were all of the components that we look at on a daily basis that we're just tracking and being aware of. And as a, as a place starter, for the board to hopefully meet your direction of wanting to clarify exit metrics for when the whole district would go remote. So these are, these are all components that we look at on a daily basis, just because they're all important components for us to be aware of. The board can decide to use or not use them as a part of the, and exit metrics that you want to use to determine when the whole district might need to go remote.
You know, so maybe to that point, and, you know, there's been a lot of things that have occurred over the last week, and a lot more information that has been brought out. Obviously, we've had CPS is opening up. They've had some press conferences about what they're looking at. District 15 is doing some things, even District 214 is doing some things. And, and probably most recently, you know, the same Harvard study that was used to put us into this process, they've now revised some of their, their process and thinking. So, you know, I go back to saying, we're always a learning organization, even as, Lori, you mentioned in one of your earlier slides, that, you know, guidance will, because this is evolving, we don't know everything, and they're learning more about COVID every single day. This is not like normal times where we know how, you know, however, you know, how certain things work, and we're changing curriculum based on new, new learnings. And, you know, I want to maybe just quickly cite something that was referenced in the, that Harvard study that came out. So, and I quote, "In July, we published guidance for school leaders making decisions about school reopenings that offered a tiered structure for thinking about risk at different levels of community spread. We recommended that schools be closed once the average daily cases rose above 25 cases, 100,000 people at the county level. Since July, our scientific understanding of COVID has increased significantly, as has our understanding of the degrees of risk in schools. And we can now recommend that schools be open even at a very high level of spread we are now seeing, provided that they strictly implement strategies of infection control." And so this is very similar to what CPS is doing, is saying, hey, we need, we understand the underlying risk, and they're really focusing in on a single metric, which is transmission in schools, and saying, if we really evaluate what is happening within schools, then everything else is an operational issue. And kind of going back with what Scott was saying, is that shouldn't our only metric then be the guidance off of what the county says? Because we do know that if things get out of hand, or let's say, just, you know, go to some far extreme, the government will come in and say, all, you know, all schools, all, everything is shut down, as they did last year. And really, now what we should be focusing in is, how do we reduce the risk, which we demonstrated we can within the schools, and really focusing in on that one, which is just the evidence of school transmission, is, is waiting for guidance based on what the county says. Everything else, Lori, as you mentioned, is an operational type of measure that you're evaluating every day. You're, 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 you're making changes, you're switching this, that, and the other to make sure that works. But that's something I throw out to the group to say, we've learned so much more, and our guidance is changing rapidly here. Maybe it, maybe we should change how we look at these things in the first place.
I may jump in here, Mr. President.
Sure, Anisha.
You know, Rich, I'm glad you brought that up. And, you know, there's a lot of conversations we've had around these metrics, hours and hours. And I've always said that these are operational metrics. Like, I don't, I don't think, what have we learned in the last two weeks that kind of negates this work? I think this work has always been operational work. And so I'm glad that, that, that you've come to that realization as well.
So again, you know, maybe from, if there's others, are we just saying that, you know, the, the only metric that we would use then is if the county says, based on your transmissions, that's when you should, you know, close down a classroom, close down a school, using their guidance as, as the barometer? Otherwise, you know, going back to where we were before, saying, we need, we need to provide the choices to parents, which we have. And, you know, I think, you know, whether it be today or next week, Lori, you'll provide us guidance, you'll provide us some feedback as to how many parents have chosen, you know, to stay in remote or come back into schools. But let's say it's, you know, greater than 60% are saying they want to return in person. That's an indication that, you know, overall, they want to stay, you know, kids want to be back in school. Parents want kids to be back in school. That's the best environment. To include what, you know, the ISBE came out with on Monday in their letter, you know, to all superintendents, saying, hey, there are learning gaps right now. We need to be focused on getting kids back into school, addressing learning gaps, and moving forward with that. So, yeah, I'm throwing a lot of information out there, and I want to get some feedback from others. But maybe that's just where my head is at, is saying, these are all great metrics and they're indicators. But if we're really making a decision to take kids out of school, then there needs to be a significant event, which would be like Cook County. And I mean, I think, you know, one of the, in your public addresses, talked about the inclement weather. You know, if it's raining outside, we don't close the schools. If we're getting two inches of snow, we don't close the schools. There, it has to be significant. And, you know, that's maybe the same thing I'm looking for here, saying the county or the public local Health Department really is, is that source.
So maybe to provide to the board, I want to, I know you have a lot of documents this week that you've had to review. And probably, but one thing I'll highlight, and really, this has been there before, so you've seen that, is in the Illinois Department of Public Health exclusion guidance, again, and we, I think we've talked about this before, they would consider a classroom, being a classroom having an outbreak, if there were five positive cases within a 14-day period, that could be linked. Or, such as in Thomas, as an example, within a few classrooms, it could be five cases or more that the county would determine could be linked. So that's an example of where the Health Department would say, you should go remote for this classroom, or you should go remote for this school or this grade level. And I think that's what, Rich, if I understand, that's what Rich is referencing, is when the county says, hey, you have an outbreak or this situation, that that would be the reason for that classroom or that school to go remote. My question would be then, if, if the board wants to move in, in that direction, we can definitely do that. My question would be, does the county recommendation for adaptive pause still apply? Because that's not something that the board agreed with previously, the metrics that the county shared for us to utilize to determine adaptive pause for the district. So would that, would that now apply, or that still wouldn't apply?
President, their recommendation
Yeah, Scott.
for adaptive pause, would that be a blanket recommendation for everyone? Or would that be a recommendation for our district? That, that's the hangup that I have, is that an adaptive pause recommendation across the board? If they come in and say, you know, Windsor needs this, this classroom closed because of this, 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 and this, I can agree with that. And if they, they can establish and articulate data to provide a, a, a reason for us to close a classroom, that's something I can back. But if, if, if it's an adaptive pause across the board, say for region 10, or suburban Cook County, or, or the northwest suburbs, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that, because I think we still need to reexamine. And if they come in later and say that, yeah, you have a specific case. But if they, is, is that what you're saying, Dr. Vine, is that?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
No, I, I would not, I would not agree with a blanket recommendation.
Right.
Specific, like what we're talking about, where they were to come in, just like any restaurant with a health code violation, or just like any other, any other entity that a, a government agency would come in and close that for, for specific reasons. I, I would totally back that, because they are the, the, they have the data, or they are investigating a specific example. I don't want, I don't want to be a, and a district that just to a blanket mandate that, that we need to go to adaptive pause when I think our district or our schools are functioning well.
So, Mr. President, point of clarification, please. Dr. Vine, correct me if I'm wrong, but to Scott's point, and to make sure that we're all on the same page here, it was only a recommendation to close Thomas. It wasn't a mandate.
Right. So technically, they cannot mandate, right? The county Health Department can't mandate that a school closes. But they, and again, a little bit of history, a reminder to the board, they're very hesitant to ever say, we recommend. I've had that discussion with our epidemiologist several times. She said, we don't say we recommend. There's all kinds of legal pieces that would have to come into play. The first time, for example, they said it would be, it would be ideal, the first time for Thomas to go into an adaptive pause. This second time that we're in right now related to Thomas, they did say, we recommend. I asked them, are you saying this phrase to me that you've said you don't usually use? They said, yes. And I said, would you put it in writing? As the board knows, they did. Yes, we were putting in writing that Thomas Middle School for, like Scott said, because of this data, is continuing in an outbreak and should continue in an adaptive pause. an adaptive pause. So again, they can't require, but I don't, I believe that's the strongest recommendation that they could make. So an example, again, talking, just to, again, give the board some thoughts. An example from what Scott was saying is, there is there, if there might be a situation where the health department says, School A has an outbreak, and we need this grade level or this school to go on adaptive pause. And now we see a connection from School A to School B, because maybe there were siblings. And now we're starting to see a link to more cases at School B, and we can link them. They might then say, and here's a second school. But we would, the board would not then follow that guidance of adaptive pause that's basically in place for everybody in the region and applies the same to everybody in a region. I think what I hear Scott saying is, it would only be when a specific class or grade or specific school is named by the county with data as one that they would recommend a pause for.
Yeah, great. I think that's where we're coming back to, saying, based on what we're seeing, based on the trend, based on the evolving, you know, book of, of reasoning here, being in school is, or being, having the ability to have kids in school is really important part, and that schools are safe, there's mitigating controls, and we have to monitor those. So I think my, my thought would be is that really our single metric is really what the county, you know, their, their guidance as they come in and identify issues. Otherwise, these are operational metrics that you monitor on a day-to-day basis, and the goal is to keep the schools open.
All right. Well, you know, we, we asked Lori to put this together. She has, you know, so I said from the get-go personally, not necessarily as president or otherwise, that this was way too operational for us to get this far down in the weeds, on this level of detail, and this rubric in the first place. And, you know, Lori's accommodated our request. This was, this was something we asked her to put together as we were struggling with the decision to take an adaptive pause. So I, I guess I'm just challenging us all to really take a step back, take a breath, and think about how much more deliberating we need to do about these finite details. So Rich, I, you know, I, I share Anisha's sentiment. You know, I, I think, I think the CDC and the staff and Dr. Bynum have done a phenomenal job addressing critical situations and, and closing Thomas and singularly closing Thomas was evidence of that. Yeah, Scott?
If I may, I just, I don't, I don't mean to, but I think to get to this point, we needed to see how this, how this works. Because I think we were asked a few weeks ago for the adaptive pause without understanding what exactly goes into this and what the operations and...
Good point.
I think tonight, I think we are all under the understanding that an adaptive pause doesn't mean district-wide. I think it means case-by-case basis. So I, I appreciate what you're saying. And to your point, I think what we've realized, and I think Dr. Bynum did a phenomenal job to show us what, what happens day-to-day, is that we're not, we're not a district that is a one, a one building, one school, the old schoolhouse, where if the, the schoolhouse closes, the district closes. I think it's, we need to realize that there are going to be instances where we're going to have to examine what is going on in the schools and make a decision. That's a hard decision for these parents to, to, to take their kids and bring them home. But I think the, the whole district adaptive pause with, with that, with that decision we made, I think it was for the, the, the good of the district not to, not to make a knee-jerk reaction. And, and to see what's going on and, and to, to realize that we can still function as District 25 and have different parts of classrooms, maybe a school, maybe two schools, that are, that are, are doing a, a mitigating strategy to, to work, but still have the other kids who may live on the, the opposite side of town still go to school. So I, I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate what Dr. Bynum has, has put together for us. And I appreciate seeing it in its entirety, but realizing in the totality of everything, that we are a bigger district, and that we can, we can still function, even though maybe some parts of our school, just like Thomas, is, is out. But it's coming back, but the other schools have still been, have still been able to, to, to attend. So again, to your point, I appreciate what she's done. I don't want to get down in the weeds, but it was, it was nice to see everything that, that goes on. But in additional, we, we can, we can still function as a district with having schools, having mitigating strategies in place.
So, Scott? I couldn't agree more. Yeah, Chad.
So, just trying to make sure I'm understanding, just because I'm following the conversation and make sure, point of clarification for myself. Sorry for the echo, if it's echoing, it's echoing in my head. So when we're talking about the metrics here, this is the metrics obviously for a pause in a, in a school, or potentially a classroom, or whatever the district would have to take. I guess, Rich, I'm trying to understand, because you made the point that there is, you know, other district, you know, this Chicago Public Schools and other districts around us, we've seen, who said they're still going back on the 19th, right? They're going back, even if the metrics are, you know, without any metrics, right? They're basically driving everything off of the individual school. So is the thought process here, I know we took a vote and we passed these other things. I'm just asking, because, you know, I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. Is the thought process here, if we do this and say, okay, we're going to, we're going to focus on this. And we know, like, the, you know, with other schools and other areas going back, and we didn't take a pause, but the reality of it is, it seems like a lot of schools have taken the, taken, taken a, a change, right? Because it's so fluid, to say, hey, we need to focus on having the kids back in school. I understand right now we're not in stage, you know, five, where it's, it's, it's full-on, everything's back, quote-unquote, back to normal from a state of Illinois perspective. But are we saying that we should be saying, we should revisit that idea of the metrics to even go back, considering, and I'm asking, because obviously then say, hey, should we say on the 19th or thereafter, you know, from time perspective, we should say, hey, we're going back four days without having necessarily met this 8% and things of that? I'm asking, because that's how I heard the question phrase. I realize there's a metric for that. But I heard you also say those are their information. So I just want to make sure it's a point of clarification, because I'm, I'm, I'm tended to think after watching and, and, you know, like you said, it's very fluid and very fluid time right now. And everybody's making different decisions after a lot of data review and understanding. And, you know, what we knew in November to now what we know in January, and now that the vaccine's out, right? And everything's moving very quickly. Is it something that we now say, hey, yes, there is a vaccine out. Yes, we do, we do know that it's coming soon to teachers and everything who want to take it and everything else like that. So is it an opportunity for us to go back, I don't know, four days a week on the 19th, without necessarily having the metrics met that we originally voted on? And if that's the case, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is that was the intent of your question, and also with these metrics with this perspective?
So, Chad, you said a lot.
Sorry.
Oh, which was great. Yeah, you know, I think what you're getting at is the 19th would then the natural progression of the discussion of saying, because everything is changing, we have the vaccine, CPS has come out, this T-14, 214 is changing, D-15 is changing. The whole thought, ISBE has put out their, their memo on Monday, is that really do we, do we look at the 19th and say, you know, yeah, we've talked about that as a target of the 19th, we planned for it, the district has planned for it, parents are planning for it, is really now do we say, you know, if the overall metric is, kids are safe in school, and that's the overall thought process, and the goal is to be have kids in school, then the only one that we should be looking at is school transmission. Therefore, if that's the case that we're going for, then really the 19th is our new target of getting kids back in school four days a week in that particular plan. But that's a separate discussion, because that, you know, right now we're in that metric. So I don't want to, don't want to co-mingle them, but that would be where that discussion would then naturally go after that.
Okay, I just, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to understand. Because obviously, based on our conference, based on what you, what you were talking about, I want to make sure I'm understanding where this would proceed into. Because with, like you said, the CPS and other districts doing what they're doing, I just want to make sure everybody in the board understands, like, that's what's happening, right? Other districts have basically said, they're looking at the metrics, things have changed, they realize that they have to get the kids back into school. So they're basically saying on the, you know, they've given the parents the choice, the choice is it's either remote or it's back in. They can't, you know, and, but on the 19th or whatever date they've chosen, they're going full. So I just want to make sure. So from a metric perspective, I'm aligned, if we're, you know, if we, if we want to say we're going to get out of this weeds and into this process, I'd be aligned. And I appreciate Dr. Bynum, like Scott said, I think Dr. Bynum's done a great job putting this all together, giving us this opportunity to understand it and looking at it. But I would be aligned to say, let's move the other way. But I just want to make sure I'm understanding what the conversation was for.
Yep.
Yep. So, and I, you know, I appreciate the, the dialogue. I certainly just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, we've been, we've been, you know, 360 degrees around this. I want to make sure we have clarity. You know, however, keeping germane to this conversation with the, the the rubric for, you know, full district closure that we've been looking at, I feel like very operational. Many discussions led us to that. I'm trying to draw some closure here to the fact that, do, do we need to vote on this, number one? And number two, do we need those finite decisions on that page that Lori's been sharing? Because I have always been a proponent of, you know, trust that verify. And my, my point there is, trust Dr. Bynum and the staff with knowing the level of detail they've been looking at. She was able to put it in a rubric for us. She was able to definitively state what they've been looking at. But at the end of the day, do we need a vote tonight? And do we need this level of detail of a rubric that we're going to shackle ourselves in the District 2, moving forward, to feel comfortable about, you know, what inevitably, if we need to close district-wide, it, it's probably going to take something outside of that rubric. I don't know if I'm articulating it very well, but I'm just trying to get us to the point where I don't know that we even need to have the conversation and vote on the intricacies of seven versus six, and of Region 10 versus Region 10 North and all of that. I have been a proponent of empowering the district to do the job we employ them to do, and for us to just kind of remain oversight, high-level, big picture, not finite metrics and operational rubrics.
Brian, just so you know, Anisha's computer logged her out, but she's working to get back on.
Okay. So, I don't know.
I think-
Wasn't even a question. Just a long statement. I wanted to beat Chad.
President, I just think, I just think, if you don't, I just think the board should be involved in any decision that's, that's more than sort of a week or two weeks that the district were to be closed. I think that's my-
I agree.
And if, if it's, like, we've, we've always referred to a snow day, or the power were going to go out, or, or, or some, some small time away from school. I just think, if there, if it were to be more than, I say, like, just say, two weeks, I think the board should be an active, an active part of that process. And I don't think, coming to this point, we were, we were part of this process to this point. Now, we, we've seen the metrics, we've seen all this, and, and I think, I think that's essentially what a lot of the board members wanted to, to, to kind of be involved in, is, is that if the district were to go on some plan that was more than, you know, the foreseeable future, the, the Board of Education would be a part of that process. So that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. So, any other-
Brian, just to throw my two cents into, I, I, I have said before, I haven't changed my mind, I don't feel like we need more metrics. We established metrics, and I, you know, I haven't felt like that's a necessary thing to, to be focusing on right now. And I don't, as I mentioned last meeting, or the meeting before that, I don't know how you determine, it seems very random to me to say it's got to be five of eight, or six of eight, or seven of eight. So I don't understand the significance of these numbers. It seems very random to me. So I guess I'm agreeing that we've gotten too specific here. I do, I do think it's important. I, I don't think we should consider eliminating external metrics. I think what's happening in the community is important. But as far as all this, and, and poor Dr. Bynum, the amount of time she's spent on this in detail, I really, it is very appreciated. I hate to, you know, dismiss it. But I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure how we are here.
Yep. That, that, thank you, Erin. That's, that's, I just want to make sure, I don't want to speak for, you know, all seven of us or, or influence, but I'm just trying to draw closure. I, I feel like I'm, I'm thankful, you know, we have the ability to look at it at this level of detail. I'm very thankful that Lori accommodated us in doing so. I think it gives us all, not just us, but the, the, the parents and, and teachers and everyone that we are here to support, certainty, right? In, in that we're not making hasty, unsafe decisions, and we're not emotionally doing things that, that, you know, if we're going to approach a closure, be it a school closure or a district closure, there is much thought that goes into it. And, and I trust that everything that went into the creation of this rubric was there all along. Honestly, that's how I feel, and that's what I believe. And, and I, I, I don't think it should have come to this level of detail, but be that as it may, I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable and confident that we can rest assured that it's there. And let's put the faith and trust back into Dr. Bynum to deploy it, if need be, at a school level or a district level, with input from us, but not anything that we have to vote on right now as a definitive, you know, hard, you know, six out of eight metrics, is it or nothing, you know, come hell or high water. I, I don't think that's going to serve our purposes, especially as fluid and dynamic as this pandemic and all involved with it has been.
Mr. President, if I could add some things?
Sure.
You know, I think, and, and I apologize, for some reason, the computer cut out, the electricity cut out at our home and just went back on. So I missed a couple of things, but I think I, I caught on. I do want to say that, as far as what I heard just now, how did we get here? You know, I think it's really important, as public servants to the community, as board members of District 25, that we take this as a learning lesson. There's a lot that we've learned. I know I personally, during this pandemic, and there, there's so many leadership lessons. And from this exercise that we went through and made our community go through in some ways, we have to use, use that as a learning lesson, and to really realize that we take, you know, I, I take my role on the board very seriously in taking decisive action. However, determining and influencing operational metrics, I've always thought, is dangerously going out of board governance role. And as referenced in our own governing policy, the board deliberations and going forward, yes, it's great, I, I agree with Scott, it's really good that we, we got to see all, you know, we got to see this, but we do have to trust in our leadership and our staff, that board deliberations and actions have to stay limited to board work and not staff work, and that the metrics are an operational tool. Even going forward, they may come up, the need for different ma, metrics, and that should be, it should be determined by the superintendent and the district staff in collaboration with public health organizations. So, you know, I, a note to self, for us to stay in our lane for the sake of the students in District 25, because when, we have a lot of work to do. The pandemic has had huge challenges for our district. You know, we spent a lot of time talking about metrics, but we have lots of learning. We have IEP students, we have social emotional learning. You know, Rich talked about ISBE. ISBE also came out with things about the social emotional learning and the highest suicide rates in our country as a whole. And our own community is being impacted by a lot of anxiety and depression. So we, as a board, have a lot of work to do. Let's do the work that we're here to do, as far as governance goes. And let's leave the operations to the superintendent and the staff. So I, I really truly appreciate all the work. And going forward, we have a lot of work to do, and we have to continue to, to hit the ground and work hard for, for the students of our, in, under our care. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Aneesh. Well put.
So, um, so Mr. President, yeah, I think to your question, then, um, you know, how do we move forward from this? I think really the no motion is necessary, you know, because the underlying premise is if the local health department says, do, you know, recommends, you know, implies, opines, whatever Lori, the various words you use, those are the words that we're going to use and, and follow our guidance with. Um, so no mess, then really no, no op, no motion is necessary today because, you know, the goal is be in school. Um, and that's the goal.
So, um, Brian, if I can just suggest so that we really are meeting the letter of the law and crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, um, we've recently um been advised by our attorney that the board president should ask if there's a motion. And then if there is none, then it, then the situation is done.
Well, Mr. President, point of clarification here. There's, as I understand it, one prior to my time and, and one just recently, there is a motion on the, on the table on what, on metrics to return to full in person. And if I'm hearing right, and I know I'm going to be redundant to Scott, Rich and Chad, are we saying that we're drawing a line in the sand? We're going to change the position? We're going full in person on the nineteenth? And then we're going to strictly use the guidance of the health department? I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding where we're headed.
So I think Gina, maybe we can separate that. And Brian, maybe you can say, is there a motion about creating exit metrics at this time?
Yeah. Yes, that's, yeah, this motion would have been to approve the exit metric rubric that we've been looking at, the multicolored rubric that Lori put together. That was strictly for purposes of a district-wide exit strategy. Which was really, you know, what we, we had been prior to this meeting and the last several meetings, deliberating over with, with relation to the pause. So specifically to Lori's point, the ask is, is there a motion for it to approve any form of exit metric? All right, so hearing none, I'm going to put the agenda back in Lori's hands and ask just for um tonight's purposes, because again, this was a special meeting that stemmed from, um, you know, prior to, prior to the um, the break. And so we've had a lot of time to think about this. But uh, point is, we did have a handful of administrative content and background information that all of us received to prepare for this meeting. Uh, she went through the transitional model of reopening presentation. Lori, is there anything else from um those attachments that we should cover? Given that there is no motion?
Right, um, so in terms of the exit criteria, no, I'm comfortable with that topic being done. Um, a, a, a couple of things to think about. I almost want to suggest that we take a um, a momentarily adjournment. So I can make sure with the board's attorney that you actually can uh make any, take any action about the step four metrics, because that is not on the agenda. The agenda was very clear about the action being related to um, what I would call the exit criteria. The motion was very clear. Um, and it talks about, you know, that the board, uh, the only motion in front of you really on the agenda was to implement related metric scorecard. So um, I, I'm really not confident that the board could take any action on the step four metrics at this current meeting. Um, so if, so I think we could have some discussion about it, but if the board thinks they're going to take action to change it, I think we'd have to pause and I'd have to check with the attorney uh that you can really do that. So that's one piece. The second thing that I would just um uh add, if we're going to engage in a discussion about the step four metrics, um, I think we have to be careful and make sure we're comparing apples to apples, right? So if we're talking about like District Fifteen, District Fifteen has not changed their program. They're returning as they've been doing all, even before winter break. Though, one of the large differences with District Fifteen is they have a much lower percentage of families choosing to be in person. They are maintaining that six-foot distance strictly um, it between all students and all staff. It's not as to the greatest extent possible. It's, it's very strictly adhered to. Um, and as you talk about, I mean, I'd be happy to hear about specific districts that are talking about going back uh with a full choice. Uh, many districts, all the districts that I know of that are returning on the nineteenth or have chosen to return this week are doing that in a hybrid model or a model they'd already been doing, um, maintaining the distancing they'd already been doing. So I think we just need to be careful that we don't just say, you know, CPS or another district without looking at the whole picture of, of their situation and our district's situation.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was going to make a similar point, you know, that Rich brought up two fourteen. Two fourteen is uh, is not surpassing the six-foot rule. And then they're, so they really haven't truly changed. Uh, I sit right next to a two fourteen student in separate Zoom meetings all day long. I know what's going on pretty well there. Um, so yeah, I guess I'd, I'd pose the question back to Lori. Aside from the, that conversation, if we want to have that dialogue, I personally, I don't even think we need to call Justin. That was not on the agenda. That's not an action item we should be having. We've already established the nineteenth was our earliest resume date. And I don't, I, I think it would be, um, we'd be remiss to try to do anything to the contrary in this, what was a special meeting to talk about an exit metric set that we just decided we don't need to vote on. So if we're going to shift gears and, and utilize any portion of this meeting for dialogue, that's fine. But I would not put Lori or anyone else on this um board in a position to try to take action on anything tonight. Um, but I do want to go back to my last question, just to clarify to Lori. Is there anything in the additional materials or content that you do want to cover? Just knowing that we're, we're not voting on it, but is there anything that's worthy of discussion in any of the attachments or anything that we were prepared?
Thank you. You know, one that's updated on board docs and different provider mail view um, just slightly is the number of students um now invited for four-day hybrid. Um, just one of our schools um had uh forty-two students and now they've just invited twenty more this late afternoon. So um, I'll just do a quick review of that. Uh, number of students um currently invited at each school for four-day hybrid. A hundred and twenty students at Dryden, seventy-five at Greenbrier, two hundred and thirty-three at Ivy Hill, sixty-two at Patton, fifty-seven at Olive, plus they're going through an assessment of additional students right now. A hundred and twenty-six at Westgate, a hundred and one at Windsor, a hundred and fifty-six at South and seventy-one at Thomas. Um, again, differences could really most relate to uh spacing. Um, otherwise, um, all categories the board originally asked us to consider during that transition to this phase um are a part of those students who have been uh, who are starting, if they didn't already start in December, a four-day hybrid experience.
You know, so Lori, with that, you and I have exchanged some emails about getting the information at a classroom level. Um, what is the challenge with getting that information at the classroom level so that we can see how these classrooms? Because what you've clarified for me is that these are just a hundred, for example, all at Greenbrier, only seventy, what you're stating, I think you're here, what I'm hearing is only seventy-five students out of their population are attending four-day.
Yeah, and again, that's their um K-five population. Again, that's a school of two hundred and fifty kids. So you've got seventy-five um of those students are attending four-day. Now soon, Rich, again, we extended the cutoff for families to choose what their option's going to be for step four. Um, and so we uh extended that through tomorrow evening. Next week, we'll be able to give you by every classroom at the elementary school what the choices are for step four. At the middle school, it's different because it depends on the class period. I can do that first, first, the current step three that we're in, but we don't have, our system doesn't gather it that way. We have to take the information our system gathers and then create a report to demonstrate that by classroom. I can't, we can't just pull up and say, Mrs. Smith's class, how many are in person or, and how many are remote? And how many have been invited in person but are choosing to stay remote anyway? We've got kind of a, a whole separate paper process we're using to do that. So we can do it, but it's not just something I can pull up and print a report out on. So we can work on that. It just takes some more time if the board wants to see that level of detail for current uh step three.
Well, I've, I would think, you know, because I've been having a hard time understanding some of these numbers and the variations between why Ivy Hill, and understanding the student populations are so high, but in some schools, like in Olive Mary State, only fifty-seven were invited back to four days.
Now, here's why, here's why. Because at Olive, already ninety percent of their students had chosen two-day hybrid, right? So on Tuesday, Wednesday, there were twelve students in my class. And on Thursday or Wednesday, Friday, there were twelve other students in my class. I can't invite them all back to four days because now I don't have social distancing. At Ivy Hill, only about fifty students had chosen hybrid. So I maybe had five students on Tuesday, Wednesday, and another five students on Thursday, Friday. I could invite my class to all come four days and I still only have ten students and I still can maintain social distancing. So the reason is, right, Olive originally had over ninety percent of their students choosing hybrid from the beginning. We don't have enough space for them to come four days and continue the social distancing. So that's really the difference. Who had a large number of students choosing hybrid originally? And who had a small number of students choosing hybrid originally? So we can invite, for example, two hundred and thirty-three students at Ivy Hill to come four days. There are still twelve or less students in every class there. Where at Olive or, you know, some of the others, um, Patton, et cetera, they have twelve students already just in, on each of the two-day options.
Okay, so then, based on what you're saying, though, even next week, you'll have, be able to provide that by classroom so we can understand how this is faring out. And I, and I'd also question, you know, if we're, if you're saying a lot of this is paper-based, that just seems odd because, you know, we can get a lot of information just through pivot tables and Excel things and, you know, downloading data. It's, I, I kind of question the ability to know, okay, kids are this way or that way when we need that information on a daily basis to make decisions. Is it, is it just the, that tool is antiquated that, that way or? And, and we know we're getting off topic here a little bit, so I don't want to dive into too much detail here.
And we have lots of expertise here, um, on how to do pivot tables and Excel and all of that. The way our attendance system works, we are not saying, we're just taking attendance. How many kids in, in Mrs. Bind's class are present? Oh, there's twenty present. We're not saying there are ten present remotely and ten present in person. Or we're not saying that typically Mrs. Bind has ten kids in person, but two are choosing to be remote today. They're still, they're still in attendance. So we have to take that system and then, and when I say on paper, we're doing some on Excel and some in, you know, Power School, whatever it may be. But it's not a, a simple pull up this report and print it. So if the board, if the board is asking for that detail, how many are in attendance in person? How many are in attendance in remote by every classroom? Um, we can create that. I can't tell you and of, you know, if there's ten kids in Mrs. Bind's class that choose in person, I can't necessarily say, but today only eight came because two came on remote and tomorrow nine came and one chose to remote. We have a lot of families that have chosen in person, but on individual days are having their kids remote in instead.
But Lori, you do know that on a daily basis. You do know what kids are there for what reasons?
Jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm, I'm, it, just for clarification, please tell me that we, we know what, what kids are in school every day.
Yes, yes, but yes. One hundred percent know who's in school. But is it remote school or in-person school? It just takes a little more work for us to create a report that would show that by every classroom for the board.
No, I'm just, okay, so that doesn't answer my question. That's who's physically in our buildings, is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, because just coming from my background, when we, when we go to a, a critical incident, we want to know who is, okay, but thank you.
Well, then I think, based on that, then Lori, you do know how many kids? Because again, if we're going to go trying to target in person, knowing how many kids today or, you know, are very chosen to be four days will help us better understand, you know, what's that delta gap you have to work toward to getting prepared for full in person, right? So if we do know that, hey, we already have, and I'm just throwing out a number here, fifty percent of all our classrooms are already full in person. It's not that, not that big of a leap to go to, you know, full four, four days in person on the nineteenth or whatever that date may be. So you have that information then.
Right, but, yeah, the big leap, right, is, is just the number of kids in the classroom on the same day. Right now, any students that are here four days in the step three hybrid model, they're here four days, but we're still maintaining six-foot distancing every.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right. So again, if the board wants a report that shows every classroom, at least at the elementary, I can do it by homeroom at the middle school, um, that currently shows how many students in each classroom are choosing in person and how many are choosing remote and how many are four-day. We can work on that. It's just going to take some time.
Maybe I'll put it like this, Dr. Bind. Um, as the leader of our district, um, do you, if you need that information, you know, we're in governance. Uh, you know, do we need those operational data? Like, do you, I, I think the question should be, does our superintendent need that information for her staff uh, to pick, to switch that question around, that paradigm of how we're looking at it?
Yes, and if I could just add on to that, I don't need this information, but our parents need this information because they have a decision to make about, you know. And so, so what I'd like to get to tonight for these parents who have to make a decision in twenty-four hours is, do you, do you have enough information for those folks to confidently make a decision about the spacing in each of their classroom?
So what we send every parent, um, thank you for that question. What we send every parent in the district is he, for your, by classroom at the elementary. So in Mrs. Bind's classroom, all of those parents got a letter that said, currently, we have um twelve kids in Mrs. Bind's classroom who are choosing in person when we get to step four, five who are choosing remote and four who haven't responded. Um, so we were able to tell them what we've gotten from the selection form so far. Um, or it might say Mrs. Johansson's class. Um, we have five students who have chosen in person, five who are choosing remote and ten who have not responded yet. So families at this point know what we know in terms of how many might be coming in their classroom. At the, and then we'll be able to send an update after we cut off the selection process tomorrow night. At the middle school, what they got was a little bit different because it would be nearly impossible to say, there's this many kids in your first period and your second period and your third period and your fourth period. So what they got was for your sixth-grade team, the sixth-grade Delta team or whatever the name is, um, there's a hundred and seventy-five kids on our team. We've heard from seventy-five percent of our families. And of that seventy-five percent, this number of students are choosing in person, this number are choosing remote, this number haven't responded yet. So they know that by their team at the middle school and they know it by every individual classroom at the elementary.
So, uh, Mr. President, I, I was going to say, um, no, Erin, thanks for that. That perspective is, is really important as far as the parents still need to make a decision. So my question, Dr. Bind, is because there is still so much missing info, quite a bit of missing information as far as who's going to school and who's not. And so parents are still, uh, those parents who haven't responded are hesitant because they possibly may want more of a distance, right, possibly? That may be one of their reasonings. Um, so now, once everybody responds, you know, there's this twenty-four hour deadline, like, you know, Erin was saying, um, and that we know, once it's all responded and a parent looks at it, be like, oh, my gosh, that's too many kids. There's no way there's going to be distance in this classroom. Um, can they then back out, not, not back out in the middle of school, but back out before it all starts? Because now all the data is in and now they're just not comfortable.
I, I think we have to allow that, right? I think it would, it would be wrong for. I think it would, it would be wrong for us to say, nope, too bad, we're going to force your child to come here anyway, right? And so, again, by giving them the information that we have currently, hopefully that gives them a very good picture of where their classroom is. And then we'll update that early next week once we, I think a lot of people were waiting to see what was happening tonight at the board meeting to make a decision as well. And so people can finalize their decision tomorrow and we'll give everybody an update. But I think they have a very, they have as much information as we have currently on what their individual classroom could look like in terms of numbers attending in-person.
That, that sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Kind of back to my revisit my last question, Lori, is there anything else pertinent for tonight's agenda or otherwise?
Not for me.
That we want to cover under the superintendent report? No?
No, thank you.
All right.
So I have a question, Mr. President.
Sure.
So I guess I know, and this is more just because I know the conversation where this has gone and with getting this information back. And I don't want any extra meetings, but the reality of it is, like, the conversation tonight, obviously, I can hear where some of this is going. Is there, is there going to be a, are we going to talk about this? Because our next meeting is until after the 19th, right? So do we have to have something before the 19th to have this conversation about, you know, what we were talking about earlier? With this, you know, looking at the metrics and more of these, you know, and these kids and everything else like that. And now the parents have made their, have come back and said, okay, they're, and looking at the numbers, right? If kids, if the school or this class can support 22, right? And the class has only 18, I mean, we'd have to look at those situations. But I'm just asking, is that something we want to talk about further on before our next meeting? Or is this something that we want to wait till that next meeting?
The other thing I would say is, you know, if the board, this, this is, this could change parents' selection, right? People are making a selection based on the metric for step four that we put out there. So if we're going to schedule another meeting to talk about revisiting those, we'll have to give parents another opportunity to re-select. Which we can do, but.
I understand. And that's why I'm asking, right? To really understand what the board's appetite is because obviously, if we're going to say no, and we're not going to revisit that 8%, and we know there, we didn't, we didn't vote on the metrics for the other piece for, you know, because it's too operational, that's fine. But now the question is on the other metrics, obviously, what's happening? I just want to make sure I'm understanding where the board's sitting because we're having this conversation. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of emails asking, so what does this mean? To your point, Dr. Bine, that, hey, if you guys are going to change, I want to change my selection. Or there could be parents who say, I want to actually go back, right? I mean, it could go both ways. I just want to make sure that we're, as a board, having that conversation and we're all understanding it.
And maybe to add, Lori, before you answer that, how many, what is the response rate at this point? Are we talking about, you know, we have an 85% response rate, we're waiting on 10%, 20%? How much are we?
It's a little bit different depending on buildings, but for the most part, it's about 75% response rate.
And in that 75% response rate, is it 75% are responding to be in-person and with 25% being hybrid? Or do you not, if you don't have that level of detail, that's?
That differs per school.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, maybe to Chad's point, maybe we should clarify for the community what this means we're governing under for that magical 19th date, since there's not another meeting on the docket before that.
Or do we create another meeting, which would be, you know, the earliest would be, what, Saturday, if not Sunday? A special meeting to talk about that then?
And, and we've also now learned from our attorney, you can't have a special meeting on a weekend. So it would have to be Monday.
Monday.
Yes.
Kudos to all you that made a little go on that Sunday.
What do we, what do we want to talk about? We want to talk about eliminating metrics.
If on the 19th, one of the topics that we talked about earlier was, you know, based on what we see, other areas, you know, like CPS and those types of things, based on new information, do we want to say, you know what, on the 19th, we're going back into full in-person? I know we said, like, you know, the big measure is under 8%, but whatever, if the measure is 9%, our intent is to go back to full in-person on the 19th and have a discussion around that, if we're open to it. If we're not, then we stay with where the metrics are right now and they, they are what they are. And maybe we talk about that on the 21st then, based on.
Well, let's get to that tonight, whether we think it would be worth something. You know, I don't want to keep everyone on the edge of their seats and have enough.
You know, that's going to be, that will, just so you know, another piece of that, if you, if you change those, that's going to also cause us some more impact bargaining. So we'll have to go back into negotiations as well. Because much of the bargaining has already been done based on the metrics that were approved and communicated by the board. Not that we can't, I'm just saying that's, the bargaining that's been happening is based on the metrics of the board approved.
So, Dr. Bine, again, I'll go back to my comment earlier. Sorry, Mr. President. Dr. Bine, why don't we, for public record, just go through those one more time for the community who is still 25% making a selection in the next 24 hours?
Okay, let me pull them up in front of me.
And Lori, while you're doing that, I think if, you know, as I think through this a little bit, if, if we change, really what we're talking about is impacting, or I don't know if we need to resurvey everyone at that point if we change metrics. Because really, it would only be saying if you wanted, if you wanted to change your decision. So maybe that is resur surveying everyone in that case, but it's, it's only looking to saying, do you want to change now based on new information? Right?
Right, so we'd have to, we'd have to, right, people are making their decision based on the information that we communicated. So we'd have to tell them, this communication has, this information has changed. Do you want to change your selection? Let me just show you. I'll share my screen again. Hopefully this will work. This is not what I want. There we go. Pull this over so you can see it, not that, this. Oh, hold on. Okay. Hopefully what you can see, I'm going to pull you guys back to get to you. Hopefully you see as a part of our website that talks about the transitioning to step-four model. Is that what you're seeing? At the bottom, it shows 10.9%. Are you seeing that? Yes, Erin is seeing that. Okay, all right, I'm going to assume you're seeing that. This is.
Oh, now I got it.
Okay, thank you.
User error.
Thank you. So this is the actual motion that the board approved in November that we would transition to step four with a goal date of Tuesday, January 19th, according to these following bullet points. An ability, an ability to maintain necessary staffing coverage, including substitutes. And the district will, to the greatest extent possible, maintain six feet from point to point, center of chair to center of chair. And with the understanding that the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education advises that students be seated six feet apart to the greatest extent possible. And with the understanding that the American Academy of Pediatrics advises that physical distance between desks should follow current public health guidance. But that in the absence of specific guidance, desks should be placed at least three feet apart. And here's, I think, the part that you're referencing, that there's less than 8% positivity rate in region 10, or less than 70 new cases per 100,000 population in the Arlington Heights zip codes in a seven-day period. And that we have a flat or decreasing number of cases in District 25. And/or that there's decreasing trends in all of these metrics that point towards them achieving that less than 8% or below 70 per 100,000. And as a part of the directive that the superintendent would review metrics on a weekly basis. So what you have here are the current Cook County Region 10 positivity rate is currently 10.9%. And the weekly number of cases in the Arlington Heights zip codes, adjusted for 100,000 population, is 258. So what you're talking about is, I think, this one, two, three, four, fifth bullet point really, or all of them, do you just not want to have, and just say, we're going back, we're going to step four on a certain date and not use the metrics that you originally identified?
So I'll throw it out there. That's where I think, at least where I'm thinking, that based on more information that we've gathered, again, we, we set these up many months ago. And, you know, again, being a learning environment, new guidance changing, everything of that nature is really saying, and we've communicated out that the 19th is our target. We now have a vaccine out. It's, it's, it's going out there. We know we're going to be, there's light at the end of the tunnel. It may not be exactly where we are. But we do know the resounding impact of, you know, a long-term not having kids in, in schools is not, not as effective as we thought. And so really, you know, in my case, it would be, are we eliminating these and just saying, we're, we're now targeting the 19th to go back into full in-person?
I would not be in support of that. That would, that would, that would be irresponsible, in my opinion. Nothing has categorically changed that much. These are still the guidelines that the CDC and others are following. This is, these are the parameters we stated after much deliberation and discussion and, 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 you know, cabinets of people we consulted to get us to this point. These are the decisions that myself and every other parent in the district is making their return plans based upon. You know, we, that's, I, I don't, I couldn't even comprehend doing a abrupt adjustment like that after we've stated and, and told the district and the teachers and all involved that we weren't going to take a pause because we were moving forward with our plans for the 19th. And these are our plans for the 19th. I would personally feel like a hypocrite to take any action between now and the 19th. Not even a hypocrite, if that's not even the right term. Like, I just, I, I can't even believe we're having this conversation.
Mr. President. Sorry.
Yes, Anisha.
Um, you know, we just went through some, like, learning lessons of, you know, the whole discussion about the metrics and how we shouldn't go into these operational discussions. So we need to stay in our lane, stay in governance. Dr. Bine, work with operations. Dr. Bine has a lot of work to do. We need to let the staff and the superintendent do the work of the district. And we can't yo-yo our community back and forth, back and forth every, every couple of weeks. Like, so if Dr. Bine thinks things need to change based on shifting things or anything, that, you know, let's leave the operations up to the superintendent and her staff and the health professionals. And let's go back to governing.
Yeah, but Anisha, I think that is governing and we're not, I don't think we're yo-yoing because the target date has been the 19th. And what we're saying is, if, as we learn more information, where this is not an operational issue, this is more of, what is our intent to get kids back into schools? To address the, the major concerns. So, go ahead, Erin.
Erin, yes, but like, I'd like to recognize Erin, please.
Thanks. Rich, I, I agree with a lot of what you said. I mean, there's a light at the end of the tunnel now. But the vaccine, we don't have the vaccine yet, you know? And we're, our, our staff and our students are, we don't have any idea when they're going to get it. And yes, the 19th has been the target date if the metrics are met. So the metrics, unfortunately, please, please know that I wish as much as anyone else that the metrics had been met. But in fact, things are not good right now. And I agree that it would be irresponsible to just completely disregard the metrics at this point. We are working towards getting more students in. We've invited, as Lori just shared with us, we're trying to get as many in four days as possible. And please, God, we will soon have the numbers where we need them to be to get all the kids safely back. I mean, if it were, I wish it were going to be the 19th, but it's just not looking like that right now, unfortunately.
So just first, sorry, just to say, just, just to clarify, yeah, we can, the item, we can have deliberation on this topic. We'd have to schedule a special meeting to take any action on it.
And that's really the discussion to say, do we need to schedule a special meeting prior to the 19th? Or is it something that we can bring up on the 21st and have more of a discussion on that point? Just to see where metrics are, where the state of the world is. I mean, we're, we're getting more information every day.
I think some of the, to that point, not that, not that I'm agreeing with you, Rich, I'm saying, we, we made a decision, we deliberated, we've made a decision and we should, unless things are drastically changing, right? We've made a decision, we stick to it. But also, there's good news on the horizon, right? ISB, I'm not, I think I saw that on ISBE that teachers are going to be 1B in getting these vaccines, right? So that's really great news. We are, teachers are going to be next in line to be getting these vaccines. And so, so hopefully, things, things will change and things will get better. But, but operation, and also to go back to the pandemic policy, right? We discussed that at the last board meeting a little bit. But pandemic policy is here to guide us as a school board as to what the superintendent should be deciding on, what, what we as a board should be. So we should refer to the pandemic policy as well.
So I think the question I'm hearing from the board is, do you want a special meeting for the topic of step-four metrics? Or do you want it added to revisit it on the 21st at the regular meeting?
I guess that we don't change the metrics now in advance of the 19th and can discuss, you know, future plans at the meeting on the 21st.
That's fine.
It's fine. I guess the one, the one question I do have is that as these numbers come back and the parents come back, Dr. Bine, for the, like, their, their decision for coming in the remote, will those, will this information you provided to us be used then? To, we're not adding any more kids at this point in time. We're staying with the, with the, with the maximum of 12 still until, until we meet the metric. I'm just making sure I'm understanding all this, right? Because there's a lot going on. I'm not trying to cause confusion. I'm just trying to make sure that we're all, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, you're correct. I will just clarify that 12 is our average around the district. Some classrooms can have more, some can have less. Right, we would not be, we would not be moving to step four unless we'd met the currently identified metrics. That would be when we would move to step four. If we haven't done that by the 19th, then we'd still be in the current hybrid model.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that because obviously, as we're notifying parents that there is going to be this many kids in the class and they make their decision, they may be thinking, oh, wait, I can come back four days. And I just want to make it very clear at this point in time, because that's why I was just, so I was asking to have this conversation. Because after the, the metrics conversation and, you know, we didn't take the, the action to vote. But I just want to make sure that it's clear, you know, that as of now, we are staying in this hybrid model until we meet the metrics. When the metrics are met, we will move to this four-day process, at which point, right? But that had the eight and the, has to be the, you know, whatever the metrics we set has to be met. But even now, after you made your decision, it doesn't mean it could switch to suddenly we can fit the full people in the classroom. I just want to make sure that was very clear. Because I was getting confused, sorry.
Thank you. And you know what, Chad? You made me think of something that is probably important to share. We did agree as an administrative team that after we've gotten everybody's selection on Friday and we've got it all figured out early next week, we're going to send every individual a parent of, and say, your child Lori Bine is now scheduled for this, you know, during step three. And when we move to step four, you've chosen this for your child. So that every individual parent will say, yes, the school has confirmed what my choices are and I know when those happen.
And then, Dr. Bine, a clarification question. About meetings, is at, at, at some point in the future, like, we're at four days right now. And I know our parents have been asking, when do we move to the five days? Which is the ultimate goal even on the plan. At some point, we will have that conversation, correct? Because at some point, our whole world will get back to normal.
Yeah, absolutely.
I also, I also want to point out one other question. I know we brought up the vaccine and the teachers and everything else of that nature, but we have to be very clear, right? We can't force teachers to get the vaccine. So we can't do any of that, I'm assuming, you know? So the reality of it is, I guess, and this is what we need to understand, when it becomes available for teachers, does that mean that we're moving back to steps? That we are potentially going back to full for, even if the metrics aren't met? I'm asking because obviously that's going to be a big question that we're going to get from the, from the, from the community. Hey, we've, we're understanding that teachers are getting the vaccine. What does that mean for the district? And I think we just needed to start thinking about what that means. And I don't have to answer that today. I'm just asking that we think about what that communication could look like.
And just so the board knows, from our practicality perspective, in Lake County, all educators, I've been informed that educators in Lake County have already been registered as educators. Many of those who do one-on-one work with students began to get their vaccines this week in Lake County schools. In Cook County, we haven't even gotten to the registration step yet. So as you said, the governor did announce educators will be 1B. We're working on 1A right now. It, teachers, principals, other support staff will be in 1B. But again, at least in Cook County, we haven't even been reached out to yet to begin a registration process for that. Our district, as well as others around us, have been asked to apply to be vaccine sites. And so we're going through that process as well. And we'll wait to hear if we are going to be a vaccination site.
Okay, so, but that last round of discussions suffice Gina for your clarification. I think that was kind of one of the last points we came to.
Clear as mud.
All right. Well, I guess that concludes the superintendent report. I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Erin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Rich. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Good day.
Pass is seven zero.